Good. Smithville Board of Aldermen Work Sessions now called to order. First item on the agenda is the Comprehensive Plan Implementation Progress Update. Jack, are you? All right.
And Linda, returning the mic on. Excuse me. As you all, many of you all know, the comprehensive plan process started under the, or after the auspices of a strategic plan that the board in 2018 requested. That the staff put together a bid to get some folks in to lead that process to get the beginning of the community input process. Often takes a while. We had a lot of input on that. That then led to a strategic plan with our five pillars. Then that led into the comprehensive plan that we implemented this board, previous board. Adopted it as the policy of the city in November of 2020. Yes, so we're 15, 16, 17 months into the implementation actions under that comprehensive plan. I've laid them out in the memo that's in the packet, including this nice little dashboard at the very last page that shows the progress that is made in the plan. It busts things out into zero to three years, four to seven years and seven to 10 years in the timeframe for the implementation. And then there's priority levels and all that. The items on here are the zero to three priority, the first three years of work. So we've been making progress on all of them. Some of it slower than others. So we are, and we will be talking to you more in the board retreat on the 25th on some of those items to get your further direction on where we need to go on there. I would prefer if this is acceptable to you, it's all in writing. If you have any questions or any thoughts or any of that, I'll be more than willing to try and answer your questions. But me reading the memo that I already wrote doesn't seem to make sense. Everybody seems to be fine with this. If there's nothing further, no questions. I'll have a seat and thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
Mr. Mayor, I may note as well, as Jack has said, we'll continue to provide these updates on a quarterly basis. So the board has the information as we continue to progress.
Sounds good. Next item on the agenda is the Transportation Master Plan update. Chuck.
Good evening. Chuck Souls, I'm the Director of Public Works. And we're here tonight to talk about Transportation Master Plan. And the Transportation Master Plan set up the vision for Smithville for transportation for the next 10 to 20 years. And it outlines the vision for community mobility, infrastructure and transportation. The plan builds on some of the work that Jack had mentioned with the strategic vision, the comprehensive plan and the Parks and Rec Master Plan. And the project scope included developing guidelines for complete streets, safe routes to schools, functional classification, north, south and east-west connectivity and access management and connectivity with trails. And it has a prioritized project list. A steering committee was established with members from the board, the public, chamber, school district and city staff. And MODA and Mark Midamico Regional Council was also involved. So we began the project last March in 21. And the public involvement included, we had a pop-up event at Price Chopper in June. We had an online survey that was open for three months from June through September. We collected 400 surveys and we touched over 3100 people on Facebook and Nextdoor. We presented the draft to the board March 3rd. And then we left the plan open and we had a website that we established for people to review the plan for from March 4th to March 31st and provide us additional comments. We received 23 comments from that additional 30 days. And I'm just going to summarize some of these. And we had concerns regarding Highway 169. We had five comments about speeding, signalization and the need for bypass. We had five people express satisfaction. The plan was great. And we had several comments about that the plan was missing something. I'm just going to take a quick moment just to go over some of those. Meals on Wheels, a fantastic service for the community, but we didn't include service operations in the Transportation Master Plan. It's more for infrastructure. Fix existing streets. We have a maintenance program for that. So that was a comment, you know, instead of doing the Transportation Master Plan, we need to fix existing streets. And we do do that. And we've just completed Tillman and Hospital Drive just in the last week. So we're moving forward with that. Signal at 169 and 144th Street. As with all the comments about Highway 169 or 92 or KK or any of the state highways and stuff, we'll continue to work with MODA. You know, as traffic warrants, we'll look at signals, we'll look at speeds, we'll look at access management, and we'll continue to work with them on that. And one comment was to remove the Metro Green Trail. And that is a Greater Kansas City Mark initiative. What our plan merely does is note that that is out there. So doesn't mean we're going to proceed with that project, but it is in the Mark Metro Green Plan. We did receive three comments about a north-south collector east of Hills of Shannon. And this is a long-term plan and it's really based on when development happens. We need to be able to project to development where we need major roads. And so if the owner of the property east of Hills of Shannon wants to farm it for the next 100 years, that road's not going to show up. We're not going out and just buying the property to start implementing this plan. It's going to be driven by development. The plan was established based on the comprehensive plan and what development would be occurring in various areas. And we had two comments that indicated that we were missing some items, but they were in the plan. We just had to make sure, you know, people saw them, the Second Creek Sidewalk, sidewalks on 92 and Liberty Road. And we did add a connection across the dam based on a comment that was, excuse me, that was received. So we did add that to the plan. We had four comments that they did not like the plan. They didn't like bikes. Bikes are not important and they didn't want Smithville to become a mega city. And the current version of the plan is posted on our Public Works webpage. And pending the board discussion, direction and questions, staff would recommend that we bring this back to the board May 17th next week for your adoption. Stand for questions.
Well, I agree with the mega city comment since that's a city over 10 million people and Kansas City is not even there yet. So I'd agree with that one. Any other comments from the board, Alderman Schubler?
Hey Chuck, would you just kind of touch a little bit on the timelines for this this plan, like when it started and things like that and how long it's been out there?
Yeah, we started, we started last March. We started last March. Well, I actually started before that. The board selected tool design to do the plan. And we started in March. We had several steering committee meetings. And like I mentioned, in the steering committee, we had members from the board. We had members from the public. We had members from the school district and the chamber. So people that were involved in the community. We did, we went all through the summer with our survey being open. We had, obviously I went over the, how many surveys we collected. We had a pop-up event in June. We continued to have board meeting or steering committee meetings. The plan was out there for people to make comments for three months. And then as we brought the plan forward back to the board, we left it open for another month at March. So we've been working on this for over a year.
I think the original agenda item was in 2018, 2017, when you guys tabled it the first time. Make sure the comprehensive plan was on first.
Yeah, Mayor, if I could just jump in a little bit, just as you said, that we have been discussing the Transportation Master Plan for a number of years and knew that it needed to occur. We wanted to make sure we did the community strategic plan to outline a bigger picture for the community. And then the transportation, excuse me, the comp plan, comprehensive plan update. So we knew what we were looking at as future expectations for what we wanted in the community. And so this was just a next piece in there. One thing to remember, this is a conceptual plan. The routes that are outlined are not the specific locations of where things will be, but they help us through the development process. The comprehensive plan and the Transportation Master Plan, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan all work together. As Jack gets new plans submitted for development in the community, all of those are reviewed and we look at those expectations of how the community will be shaped. If there's a parkland area that might be necessary on attractive land, a trail, those sort of things to help us. All, these are the expectations we have of the community for how this development fits.
And this, this isn't the end of any kind of public participation. I mean, when, when a property starts developing, the first input for public is going to be through the planning and zoning process. And that's where these things are going to get laid out. That's when we'll have those discussions on the transportation network, you know, what we want for trails or sidewalks or roads in those areas. So this isn't the end of the public process and by no means like Ms. Wagner mentioned. Now I forgot what I was going to say, but anyway.
Well, I'd like to mention a couple of things too, for those that actually read the entire plan. The, this is holding developers accountable for putting in sidewalks and roads that don't fall apart because Rock Creek was a few years old compared to our other subdivisions. It had very few houses on it 10 years ago and we already had to replace roads, right? And sidewalks going from three feet to four feet to five feet to six feet. That's expense the developer is going to have to pay and concrete isn't cheap. So.
It sets out those typical sections for roads.
Yeah. And if we look at the road failures we've had in our subdivisions, I think Marv's seen it. I know Kelly saw it in Hills of Shannon and Harbor Lakes is, they're wavy. They haven't fallen apart yet, but if we had this 20 years ago, we'd probably even bought better shape with our road conditions. As we've learned in Clay County, it doesn't compact very well.
Clay County.
Yes. So, any other comments for Chuck? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor Bowie. Chuck, you had mentioned that the need for a north-south addition off of one, instead of 169 only and a east-west route. So just to clarify, we are in the process when business or developer comes, we are pushing away from 169 toward a new east-west and north-south byway.
Well, so when you, when you think about communities, you got, you got to think about the developments and how people are going to get around. If an area develops and all you have are residential streets and you don't have collector streets or arterial streets for people to get to so that they can get to a 169 more effectively, then everybody's cutting through the neighborhood just to get to 169. So what we try to do is we lay these out, not necessarily in a grid system, but in a grid system where you have collector streets every half mile, arterial streets, which would be similar to 169 every mile so that people can get around and have access. You know, not just, not just so we're pulling people as a bypass from 169, but so they can get around to the different areas that they need to get, you know, because you're, you know, your shopping areas, your, your public areas, parks and your service areas, hospitals and city government. You gotta have ways to get there and you don't want them all cutting through all the residential streets where your kids are walking and playing and you want traffic slower. You don't want the street in front of your house to become the de facto, you know, collector street because there isn't one available for them to get to easily. So that's, that's kind of a typical spacing.
Okay, Chuck, thank you. And you've done a great job putting that together. Just, I know we talked before, but, but north-south is Smithville, right? And that's the way it is. And business keeps going north-south on Smithville on 169. So I know we talked about the need for both directions. It's just, we can talk about it more at the retreat. I just wondered if we're, if we know we need it, but there's nothing actually designated that I've seen actively for it, right? So, thank you, Chuck.
Any other comments, questions for Chuck?
Hey Mayor, can you, can you guys hear me okay? Yeah, I just, I want to say thank you to Chuck, the Alderman. I know we involve some folks from the community as well on the input of this. I did read through all the comments and I appreciate that we gather those, the good, the bad, the indifferent because we obviously need to hear from our citizens, but I also want to make sure, and it's been, it's been talked about this evening, that it gives a roadmap for our developers who come to the city, to the planning and zoning process, first to Jack and then through the planning and zoning process. So I appreciate all the work you've done, Chuck. This is a good foundation to have for the future growth of our city.
Thanks, Alderman Hartman. All right. Anything else? Maybe not. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Don, you ready? Lori, you're up. Linda, do you have the clicker? You're just going to do it for him?
I was going to say, who has the clicker? Thank you for.
I think Linda will just take care of it.
Okay. Thank you for allowing us to come up and meet y'all and have a moment of your time tonight. We really appreciate it. I haven't had a chance to meet all of you, so I apologize. My name is Dawn Adams. Been at Smithville almost two years, a fairly new resident. And I have with me Lori Kessinger. Of course, I've been here 15 years. So our purpose and goal tonight is to meet the council and make you aware of what our goals are and where we're really wanting to go and partner with the council and the city. Obviously, we're a little bit excited about animals. So if you haven't heard, we're a little passionate. Oh, certainly. I can get louder. Thank you.
Just so Dan can hear you.
Okay. So just to bring awareness to our organization, our group, we recently started a 501(c)(3) to benefit the local municipal pound. So our goal is to see how we can help and work as partners to improve things at the pound as well as just overall animal welfare within the city of Smithville. We have a presentation for you that also outlines our mission statement so that we're, that everyone's aware of what, what our purposes and why we're here. So again, our purpose is just to kind of assist with what Lori was instrumental in starting and pick that back up and make some emphasis on, in priority on animal services within Smithville. I'm not going to read the entire mission statement. I'm sure you guys have the PowerPoint, so I don't want to bore you with that. Next slide, please. But I do want to let everybody know that we haven't been live very long. As a matter of fact, our 501(c)(3) was just approved a few weeks ago. However, we kind of hit the ground running. So we've been at this for three months. And in three months, we've made a pretty darn good impact. And a lot of it was due to the voices of the community and that's why I'm here. I just, I just really want to echo the fact that the community has spoken and they're very loud and there's a lot of, you're the passionate, whether you love animals or you're not. I'm learning that really quickly too, and that's a good thing. But it's pretty amazing the way this community has rallied together and the things that we've done in a short time. So some of the things that we've had a direct impact on for the municipal pound, we replaced a two-gallon hot water heater. That included some new, a new standard-sized hot water heater, which would allow all the dogs to get warm baths versus cold baths. We also were able to get the plumbing and the electric and the overall installation for that. We were, we've been organizing the shelter and adding clear locking storage bins to make room for further improvements such as maybe a possible washer and dryer in the future so that the bedding doesn't have to be thrown away. We've obtained weekly pooper-scooper services. We've paid for a vet bill for a pound dog that would have probably fallen out of scope. And we've recruited volunteers to walk dogs, paint facility, organize supplies and hopefully foster pound pups too. So the goal behind this again is bringing the community together and how can we help assist what you guys already have in place? Some of the other things that we've done, so we've, we've developed Friends of Megan's Paws and Claws. So that's the name of the organization. We've formed a board of directors. We're actively forming an advisory board and a fundraising board. We're seeking a TNR committee. We've acquired a Missouri business. We've submitted, well, actually, since we've done this, we've gotten the approval for the 501(c)(3). We have over 340 Facebook members and we've raised over $5,000 in donations in three months. And actually, it's really almost 6,000 as of yesterday. So this isn't something that we want to just have a one and done thing. We want this to be a lifelong thing. How can we augment the current situation? So we don't plan on just having fundraisers for one year. This is a forever thing. And it's not just about fundraising. It's about overall animal welfare. Some of our goals, just to share our goals, we'd like to have some long-term partnership with the city. We'd like, again, consistent year-round fundraising benefiting Megan's Paws and Claws and the animals of Smithville. We'd like to advocate to prioritize and expand the animal services in Smithville. We would like to recruit volunteers to fill the gaps at the pound and partner to also help the city, maybe sell city licenses at the events that we host, things like that. So give an opportunity for a little bit of revenue for the city as well. If you're not familiar with Megan's Paws and Claws, you should check it out. It's pretty amazing. But they have a wish list and we really want to help get that wish list because we know these items are out of budget. One of the large wish list items is an irrigation turf system. That irrigation turf system runs about 15 grand and up, just so you're aware. And it's pretty important to them because they have a pretty small area right now in which the dogs get to go out and have their outdoor time in. And it's muddy because it's impossible to keep grass growing because of the size of the dogs and the fact that it's small, right? So you wind up with dogs who consistently have to have baths and workers, water city workers that are constantly in mud. So it's really important to us to try to fix that problem. Potentially adding a washer and dryer, having a meet and greet fenced yard, which would help with your adoption rates, repairing wood rot, adding a security system, a smart smoke detector system, additional storage and shelving. Those are just some high-level things for goals, but those are things that we're working towards. We also want to work on education within Smithville. So how can we help provide low-cost vaccine and microchip clinics? This would also help, again, if your, if your pets are chipped, they're reunited much faster. So hopefully it would reduce the amount of intake that you have within the pound. And then we'd also like to partner with some of our other local organizations such as NOS. So we'd like to provide discounted spanneuters with them. And we are establishing a medical fund for vet needs for pound puppies that fall outside of the city budget. And I can't see that way, so I'm going to look this way now because, sorry about that. And also establish volunteer scanner groups to assist in reuniting found animals because obviously that happens 24/7/365. And we can't really just depend on one person at the pound to do that. It's not quite fair to them. So we'd like to help assist with that as well. And then the next slide. Oops. There we go. Okay. So with all that being said, I wanted to, one, introduce ourselves to kind of let y'all know what we really want to do. We really want to make a positive impact on animals in Smithville. And how can we do it together? As we talk through these things and we, again, we're working on identifying the needs and the problems and how do we help? It's important that we also know what the city has in mind and what the plans are. So I'd like to ask if we could share expansion plans with us so that we know what we don't want to do is go spend $15,000 on an irrigation system if the plan is to move the facility. We also know the facility is 10, almost 11 years old and it could really withstand to be larger to accommodate for the size of the growing community. In addition to that, there are other plans to have dedicated staff. So right now we have water department employees who are gracious enough to take care of the animals and do a fantastic job, but they're only there so often and it's, it's a lot of work. I'm considering the volume. We'd like to know what the plan is for dedicated staff. And is there a plan for animal control officer as well? And also wanted to follow up on the status of volunteer process. I know you guys are working through developing a volunteer SOP right now. So just, we'd like to know the status and when we could pick that back up because we're anxious to get in and make some wonderful improvements for you guys. So I'll take a pause there. That was a lot. I hope I didn't go too fast. And again, I thank you guys for your time. I just, I didn't want anyone to feel threatened by us kind of jumping in either. We just really want to help.
Thank you. Yeah, I think one bully missed was the TNR also on that last slide, but that's a pretty important one as well.
Yep, we're, we're, I cannot speak. We are working really hard to try to get someone to lead a committee for that right now. I've had a lot of people say they're interested, but then they don't really come to the table with it. So we'll continue to recruit for that because I think that's a big problem in Smithville that could be addressed.
Any questions for Dawn or Lori? I can't see Dan if he's raising his hand because he minimized it, but there we go. Okay. Alderman Schubler?
Yeah, I don't really have a question, but I would like to, you know, know if, you know, with our retreat coming up, is this something that we can talk about, how we can put, get an NACO in the budget or something like that down the road?
One of the reasons that we wanted to make sure that they were able to present this evening to outline kind of their desires. Included in the retreat will be a number of areas that looking at future needs that includes staffing that staff will bring forward. We're going to be looking for board priorities as well. So what we wanted to make sure is that at the retreat, we have kind of all of those things. On the 17th, we'll bring an update on the, this year's budget. And then we'll have budget presentations on the initial outline needs by staff. What we'll ask you guys to start thinking about are those priorities that you've not necessarily seen in, in the, in the staff report based on staff priorities and what we're looking at through development plans and, and all of our strategic planning so that we can discuss all of those at the retreat. So yes, we may not have specific details of costs or things like that, but if we can start talking about what those priorities look like, that give us a work plan in developing the budget and moving forward.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming out and doing this.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Alderman Russell?
Just thank you, Mayor Bowie, and thank you ladies as well. Just a quick comment here, for those that don't know, the current animal control is handled by our local police department. So that would help take load off the police department as well. Thank you, Mr. Bowie.
Any other questions?
Do we have a time or date that we could come back to maybe get some answers to our questions as far as expansion and plans?
So the, I know on the, the budget discussions start this month and we'll kind of know, have a first blush at that in probably July, June.
Yes, I think it's July that we'll have the first discussion, right? So yeah, so that process for the budget begins really, it's been ongoing at staff level and, and your discussions that we've had have been included in that as well in what we'll bring forward on the 17th. Then the retreat later this month and then we'll take information from the retreat to build the budget that we'll bring forward for, for initial discussion by the board in July. And as we move through that process, we'll, we as staff can be in communication with you all as to direction we get from the retreat and where priorities shake out and in helping developing some information for that as well.
And then usually we get first draft of budget like August, September, and then we have to have it adopted because our budget year starts November 1st. So you'd know at least before then. So.
Is there an opportunity for us to know the status of the volunteer situation prior to that?
We've been, I think we had reached out that we're developing, like you said, that's, that is internally staff-driven. And I've asked the, the chief to work with Melissa to come up with a recommended protocol and SOP for that. So as we've got that and can review that, we'll reach out as, as we've got that available as well.
No, I just wanted to make a comment that I really appreciate y'all taking time this evening to hear us out. This is very close to my heart and I was very elated when I heard that Dawn and several people came together to kind of resurrect and keep going the animal shelter. Because we all know as a city grows, the population grows and so does the animal population. And so I believe strongly in my heart that there is a strong force for revenue and stuff like that. If we all work together, it's going to, it's, it's slow and it's going to take time. But we're dedicated and we want to see this continue to grow and continue to serve the community.
Appreciate that. Anybody else?
Mayor, I just, I just want to say thank you ladies for coming in this evening. It's, it's very obvious that you're passionate about this. And I believe a lot of us on the board are, are animal lovers as well and, and just appreciate you sharing because this was a very detailed presentation. And I just want to thank you for, for being here this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yep, appreciate it. Well, that's all that we have on the agenda. Chuck, we gave you more time and you didn't take it, man. All right. Yeah, well, all entertainment motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Thank you. Do I have a second? All in favor of adjourning, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. All right, see y'all again in 30 minutes.